Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Don Swanker. We'll go ahead and call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Stein, to my right, Nen Flagger, Bjorn from I T., Lisa from the Auditor's Office. Luann is the Executive Assistant in the background. We have Brittany from the press. And first up this morning is Jaden Shackle from the County Engineers Office. Good morning, everybody.
Bjorn, good morning.
First item is discussion, well, that was tabled from last week for the fiscal year twenty-three R C T P grant for the city of Sebula. So it was followed up with them, and the reason why it hasn't been done yet is they've reached out to numerous contractors for the work, and they haven't, those contractors haven't, probably due to the scope or scale of the work that needs to be done, haven't been responsive as far as coming in to emotionally perform the work.
When I talked to Travis, Public Works Director at Sebula, he said they've actually bid it. A contract, they awarded a bid, and then the contractor never did anything. And they couldn't, they couldn't talk. So they redid it, and now the current contractor that has done work around and things is incommunicado, is not responding. So this is what they've been going with. They go through the steps and everything to do it. They award the bids, trying to get it done, and then they just never hear anything back from the contractor. And this has happened at least twice.
So if you can go out and bid it like that to a contractor, you also put the stipulation in it has to be done to a certain amount of time, or you better pay it back.
All the, all the stuff, all the, the fine details of how they did their bidding process, I do not know. When I talked to him, I said, if we extend this one more time, I said, this is it. And I said, and I can, I would talk to Jaden to maybe see if there were some other contractors that we know do the work that we could kind of, he said, we're, we're, we're open for anything. He goes, but our, our guys can't do it. We don't have a backhoe. We don't, we don't have the equipment, but, and we're just.
What are they doing?
They're, they're doing the boxes around some manhole. So, you know, the storms, they're just redoing the boxes. They're kind of spread out all over Sebula, so it isn't like it's just one area, so they gotta move when they do it. I'm like, that's like anytime they replace a manhole cover, they're not in one area. They're spread out. So it should be a known quantity when people bid it, what they gotta do, but they're struggling to get the work done. They've been trying. And they're just, they're, they're kind of, they're like, if you guys have anything you can know, do, or that can help us, we appreciate it. And so.
So the point is, like I said, if you can put in the bidding process, if you're gonna bid this had to be completed in eight months or whatever it is, six months, and if not, then you're gonna have, you're gonna get what you call the fine.
And that's where I don't like damage. I don't know if they.
Nobody probably bid it.
Maybe it's not a, yeah, maybe they receive quotes and not true bids. I don't know how, how their verbiage was in there.
Well, in that case too, if Travis wants some insight from Jaden of how they should bid it or what they should do, what was the amount? Do you remember?
I do not.
The amount that you awarded?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand dollars.
So if that does not get awarded, um, what happens to it? This goes back in, well, comes out of where? Supplement? General? They go back in. It's not like we have to award it to somebody else. It's completely ours anyway. It's not like we are.
So I mean, I can give them a list by them, the city of Sebula. I can give them a list of contractors that we typically work with on our projects or that we know do that type of work. Granted, some of the contractors, maybe for their purposes, might not be the cheapest, but they'll come in and get the work done.
Yeah, no doubt.
It's, we just had that, literally that work completed as part of the Division Street Monmouth work. There was the San Cherry Manhole Concrete Boxouts that got performed on that, so.
So is it a case where, Don, you can give, or Jaden, you can contact Travis and see if he can help out there? And I, I'm not opposed to extending it, but how long are we talking again?
If we extend it for a year, I told him this would be the last extension, and he goes, he understood.
So the other thing is, if it's only done in a timely manner, we budget, if we're doing a year, we're gonna do.
A budget amendment?
Before, no, we're gonna do it before the next budget comes into effect. That way, we don't have to budget again, correct? Yeah. So it's gotta be done by July first of twenty-six.
Yeah.
It's in the budget right now.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would make that motion to extend. I'm sorry.
You need to untable.
Yeah, we need to untable our, our business on the, uh.
So that's your motion to untable it?
Yes, my.
I got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to untable action on the F Y twenty-three R C T P extension for the city of Sebula. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
So are you gonna do June thirtieth, like it is this year, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and then you're gonna extend it till June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six? Is that your, okay.
That would be my second motion to extend the R C T P to Sebula, to the city of Sebula, to June thirtieth, oh, two thousand and twenty-six.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to extend the R C T P F Y twenty-three request to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, with no extension thereafter.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. And we will reach out to, like I say, we'll get together and we'll make sure we get Travis what he needs to, uh.
If you want, when I send him an email, just copy you three.
Yeah, perfect.
Aware, and I'll just give him a list of four to five contractors that we work with, and that do that, either we work with or that do that type of work and kind of give them the information they need to reach out.
That would be awesome. Now we're in the loop. We know what's going on, and if he answers and doesn't include us, then maybe what we're gonna do.
There you go.
Uh, next is fiscal year twenty-six, R C T P funding agreements. So this is for this year's, uh, cycle, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, we received, we recall, last week, we received the agreement from the city of Miles. Well, these, we now have agreements from the city of Monmouth and the city of Bellevue for their approved R C T P projects. Uh, because we can do them individually first.
How much was Monmouth's?
Monmouth was the twenty-five thousand.
Bellevue?
Bellevue was twelve thousand six.
Six twenty, yeah.
I'll make a motion. Do you got more you want to say, Jaden, or?
Oh, just that, uh, I can, for the city of Monmouth, I guess we will not agree on an extension for.
I'll make a motion to approve the R C T P funding for the city of Monmouth.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve the F Y twenty-six R C T P funding agreement with the city of Monmouth for twenty-five thousand dollars. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And I'd make a motion to approve the R T, R C T P funding agreement with the city of Bellevue as presented for the twelve thousand six hundred and twenty.
Twelve thousand six hundred.
Twelve thousand six hundred.
I would second that. And these are one-year agreements, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve the F Y twenty-six R C T P funding agreement with the city of Bellevue for twelve thousand six hundred dollars. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, last is a fiscal year twenty-six, uh, five-year program revision. So, uh, last week, you all approved the H S I P funding agreement for the Bernard Road overlay. Uh, with that, it changes the funding for that project, so obviously we're receiving H S I P funds for that.
Which is safety.
Safety funds, yeah. And it, so that needs a, a five-year program revision too, for us to include in the program that H S I P funding, because it in churn also changes the project number. It was a F M number, it was a foreign market number, but with this funding, it now changes it to a H S I P swap uh, project number. So this revision adds that funding into our program for that project and subsequently changes the project number. So, uh, just a formality really is what this is.
Eleven thirty-four. Eleven thirty-four. I would make a motion to approve the resolution for the Bernard, uh, revision to include the H S I P, H S I P award funding into Sebula, C F Y P.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve the resolution eleven thirty-four dash oh six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five for the Bernard Road P C C overlay, changing it from F M to a H S I P award through C F F, C F Y P. Any other discussion? Did we get that right? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And then speaking of that project, I do have check plans due a week from today for that, for that project to be on track for November letting, so.
So initially, we're doing from E seventeen.
To the Crabtown Bridge.
Crabtown, yeah.
And some of that is your approach to Crabtown Bridge. That bridge was done in oh four, oh five-ish. So some of the concrete's new, so we're gonna be tying into the concrete a lot sooner than going all the way to the bridge, because it's less than, right at twenty years old. But we will be putting paved shoulders along the existing newer concrete that's out there, so we'll still do the safety improvements all the way to the bridge.
And G thirty-four, is that the G thirty-four bridge is complete?
Yes, yep, that project is done. We are working on, uh, closeout stuff with the D O T for that, but construction is all wrapped up for that project.
Still need to inspect it again, or?
Uh.
Concrete?
No replacement, no? No, we did, or they did their panel replacements, and, uh, they did some smaller patch some areas where it was warranted, where it was just a small crack on the edge of the slab where it didn't warrant a full panel, but all the repairs have been done. We're just waiting to take them back. All the repairs are done, but we're just waiting for the pavement markings on those replaced panels to get performed, so. Because there is paint that has to be completed yet, but we're talking like twenty feet of paint. But then that is the last, that, then construction will be wrapped up on that. But it is open to the traffic or public.
Are we into reclaiming again?
Uh, yes, as of yesterday, yes. As of today, no. I don't know the way the rest of the week, what it entails, but I'm gonna guess this week is kind of a no-go for the most part.
Sound like weather, and the next three days, where are we at now?
As far as miles completed?
No, where are we at? I mean, where are we at, working at?
Oh, we got two crews. One's working up by, towards the Bernard Zwingel area, and then another crew is over here working east, sorry, west of Macocca, like towards the Nashville, uh, airport area.
I did get to talk to one of the secondary road people, uh, at the rodeo this last weekend, and he said he had fielded a complaint from somebody, because he said, you guys don't hardly ever come on our, come on our road anymore, because you don't ever put rock on it. And they're like, does it need it? And we're like, well, no, not really, but it's like, well, that's because of the, the reclaiming process, and their road was done about a year or so ago, and it's just.
So yes, it is taking, we have noticed it, once they're reclaimed, they do take less rock to me.
They do. It's unbelievable.
But the, the other, on the flip side, is when we have the two crews going, some of the other roads, it does take, there is longer intervals between our regular blading. So like yesterday, uh, last week, we received some complaints about the ruin, one that's been actually reclaimed from the first part of this year. Hasn't been bladed since then, and we were able to verify that. And so, long story short, we were able, we had the guys go blade some of those areas, because they have, it has been a while since they've been touched, so that's part of the downfall of running the two crews is just, there's longer intervals with the regular bladings, but.
Well, still, I mean, if it's called, we need it, then we'll get to it, you know? I mean, that's the case.
And just so we get it on the record, because one, excuse me, one question I continually get asked is, once you reclaim a road, do they go back in? Because a lot of times the slope is more than maybe six or five or six degrees. What timeframe do you let it set before they go back in and try to get it down to that five to six degree?
So we've noticed from year one, there was one road in particular that has had a pretty harsh slope, or steeper than the four to six percent, and we were able to verify that again this year. So shows the guys have been maintaining it, which is good, but either way, it's too much so. And that is, since we, uh, told the motor grade, motor grader operator to, as he does his routine bladings, to just try to knock it down a little bit, because like, some of it was probably ten percent, which is, that's pretty steep, you know? If it's seven, it's like, well, it'll eventually, it's correct, yeah. Especially with winter, when they, uh, when you grab rock in winter, you grab it from the crown. So winter tends to decrease the crown, but this case where it's like ten percent, yeah, that's something that we need to correct. And rather than doing it abruptly all at once, we'll just take care of it as we do routine bladings. So as far as when we're doing it, the year of, so like if it's road right now, that are too steep. I think it's best to wait till fall to see how, once they get settled and in traffic, and they get some regular bladings, that may help it. But if there are somewhere gets excessively steep, it's probably something we should go in and try to correct.
Good.
A lot of variables into that, you know? I mean, you wanna let it go through a freeze stall process for sure, and, you know, if it's got a lot of semi-traffic or not, isn't what semi-traffic, I mean, in all considered, but.
And that's where it's nice to have the GPS to take shots and document that, because there's some people that think the road's still too flat, and it's within the four to six range, and it's right where we need to be, but then other people think the four to six is way too steep. And like, this is crazy steep. This isn't safe. And well, if it's in our four to six, it's acceptable, so. At least it helps to have a GPS to truly document what it is.
Honestly, I've heard nothing but good things since we've been doing it.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of that, but.
You know, it just, there was, that's one of the questions I get. At what point in time do they come in and make sure it's the, the, you know, the five percent slope and all that stuff? And that would be the one question.
I do remember, the road I was referring to from year one was a Dark Hollow Road. That's one that we have taken shots. Yeah, that's pretty excessive. Uh, I'm sure there's others like that.
I also don't have much footage, so if you really wanna get it.
There is that too. So as we, uh, get some of those calls, we, I'll make a point to go shoot them, look at GPS to document it and such, so.
I mean, a couple of things that I'm hearing on, the crowning is good, but like roads that are, well, well, due to be re-crowned. And, you know, the guys, well, we can't knock the lips off, because we need that for re-crowning. Well, pictures I showed you a week or two ago, they're kind of right back at it. With every rain we get, it does the same, same issue, and it doesn't leave you, I mean, it literally is washing almost into the center of the road and back out. That ain't on the next weeks of re-crown, re-crowning, we need to be knocking that lip off, so that water can get out of there, because that's ridiculous.
Yeah, it's just a double-edged sword, because if you shave that lip off, and then we're saying, we do have, then we really don't have anything, without going way down to the ditch to grab it, bring it up, uh, we don't have material to crown it and.
But you can't come over a hill and come to a washout that's deeper than your tire, you know, so.
So, yeah, it's.
They've been doing it for years.
Yeah.
We're getting there. Like I say, overwhelming has been positive, but those are just the questions that I get. It's like, well, how long do they take before they redo it? And I was like, it's gotta get packed, it's gotta get settled, all that stuff, so.
And I would like to, for anybody that's listening online, just state that, uh, the first month is, they do, it's been proven, I guess, the first month is rougher than after that. It's, some people say we made the road worse, which it may appear that way. It's just, it takes time for, takes moisture, traffic, everything to get all that rock seeded in and get the road back to its, you can't get the full compaction. With our, we compact it, but we can't achieve the full compaction initially. It just takes due time. So the first month, it will get worse before it gets better, I guess. But then after roughly month one, it's, should be significantly better.
All right. Anything else?
Nope. All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, we have visitors and citizens. Is there anybody online or in, uh, in the meeting today that'd like to address the board? I don't see anybody online but ourselves, and, uh, I don't see anybody here, so we'll move on to next. We got, uh, Linay Birkin with, uh, Coordinator of Disability Services.
Good morning.
The whole, the work today.
Change is amazing.
Yes.
Under the nitty-gritty.
We're ever changing.
Or at least that's constant.
Yeah, exactly. So the, um, first thing we're gonna go over is the resolution to terminate the twenty-eight E agreement with the region.
It is resolution eleven thirty-five. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution of eleven thirty-five to terminate the agreement.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve resolution eleven thirty-five. Um, approval of Eastern Iowa Mental Health Regional Governing Board of Directors' attention to terminate dissolve the Eastern Iowa Mental Health District Region twenty-eight E agreement. Any other discussion?
So maybe just a brief why, because this is all changes and.
Because the regions are ending, so that's, yeah, that's the whole reason why, um.
Somebody wondering why is that?
Yeah. So we had the twenty-eight agreement for many years, um, and we just have to officially terminate it now that the state has switched things from the regions to the ASO.
You noted in the minutes that it was terminated as of June thirtieth?
So it's gonna be technically terminated, um, I don't know if she had it in here. Yes, December thirty-first, twenty-five.
Is it December thirty-second? Yeah, because I gotta still pay some bills and things.
Just to make sure all, yeah, all the bills come through and get paid, and then they'll be able to close things out.
So that's what Cedar, Clinton, Jackson, Muscatina's got.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. It is terminated.
That works. Um, and then the next thing we have, um, is the resolution for the court advocate. So with, uh, Jackson, or Jackson currently shares the court advocate, all five counties do, with the Scott County Court Advocate, um, Greg, and we, they want to continue to work with all five counties with Greg as the court advocate. And since we each need somebody, um, that it would be a good fit, um, they do, um, have in here that if the ASO does not pay a hundred percent, then the counties will have to pay, um, the portion that doesn't get paid. We usually run, and it would be based off of the numbers of people, so it would be a percentage, and we're usually around three to six percent of all the court committals. So, um, potentially, whatever the ASO does not pay, um, we would have to pay three to six percent of that. So, um, hopefully the ASO pays for it all. They had said that they would pay for any reasonable costs, um, for the court advocate, and that they wouldn't cover the court advocate expense, but they wouldn't, um, give Lori the actual.
Well, the troubling word there is what they interpret as reasonable.
Correct.
So that would be resolution eleven thirty-six?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve, uh, resolution eleven thirty-six, the mental health advocate services with Clinton, Cedar, Jackson, Muscatina, Scott Counties, or mental health services as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve resolution eleven thirty-six dash oh six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, um, approving a twenty-eight E agreement for mental health advocacy services between Cedar, Clinton, Jackson, Muscatina, Scott Counties. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And then, um, the final thing that I have is then just the official twenty-eight agreement, twenty-eight E agreement for the mental health advocates services.
Does that affect July first?
That would be effective July first, correct.
I'd make that motion to approve the twenty-eight E agreement, uh, eleven thirty-seven.
I would. Not a resolution, it's just a motion.
Oh, okay.
I would second.
We got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to enter into a twenty-eight E agreement for mental health advocacy services with Cedar, Clinton, Jackson, Muscatina, Scott Counties. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Any other good news?
And that's pretty much all that I had for you. Uh, still a lot of unknowns, um, with the transition with the ASO and the DAP. So hopefully, when we get a little bit more information, Jack and I can come back and kind of give you guys some updates on what's going on with everything. The ASO is still busy working. Um, we're getting people hired, getting people put in place. Um, we're still not sure who those key people are in our area. Uh, the DAP, they did reach out. We do know, um, some of the people that we need to hand off to and, um, who we're gonna be working with, though at least we have some names. But they're also still working on hiring and getting things finished and hopefully.
And with Clinton County, you worked with Clinton County, it's working out for you?
Yeah, so, um, I was actually there yesterday and kind of just got started with getting hooked up with, um, their A T and kind of getting everything figured out with.
Well, you got connections there anyways.
Yes, yep.
Hopefully that's a smooth transition and works out for both of us. I think it's a, it's a good partnership, so.
Absolutely. I agree.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Keep us informed. Keep up the good work, and, uh, thanks for being resilient.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, next up, uh, Lisa, you have the floor. Brent, you have, you, do you have anything you wanna bring?
Nope, I was just here to see if she had any information on the manhole stuff that.
Thanks.
So this morning, I made a motion to approve the minutes of the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve the minutes of the July seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five, five meeting and board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
We did have a couple of claims. Uh, this is not a normal claims period. Uh, we had our end of the year claims period last week, but we did have a couple of requests, um, to pay a couple of claims in this fiscal year, one being that Jeff did receive. He did purchase a scissor lift or a lift. Um, so that is one of the things that you're paying for today. So I do need a motion to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So I'm. I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve resolution number eleven twenty-three dash zero six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six appropriations by department.
Move to approve.
I second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve resolution eleven twenty-three dash oh six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six appropriations by department. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve resolution number eleven twenty-four dash zero six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, naming the county officers' bank depositories for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the reporter and sheriff as the designated banks to deposit revenues held in their trust account.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve resolution eleven twenty-four dash oh six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, naming county officer bank depositories for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for the recorder and sheriff's designated banks to deposit revenues held within their trust accounts. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve resolution eleven twenty-five dash zero six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, naming Jackson County Bank depositories for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the County Treasurer's Office.
Well, I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve resolution eleven twenty-five dash oh six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, naming Jackson County Bank depositories for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the County Treasurer's Office. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Need a motion to approve resolution number eleven twenty-six dash zero six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five for designation of county bank for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, designating Macocca State Bank for county warrants and payroll, payroll warrants.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve resolution eleven twenty-six dash oh six dash twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five for designation of county bank for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, designating Macocca State Bank for county warrants and payroll warrants. Any other discussion? And just for those that are listening, in case it seems like we're blowing through this awful fast, this is stuff we have to do every year to set up the new fiscal year, which starts July first, and so that's why it's just basically, it's just the mundane work that we gotta repeat every year. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
And actually, this is one of the things that the state auditors look at.
Yeah.
So this is very important that we do this, yes. So I need a motion to approve resolution. So this is very important that we do this, yes, so I need a motion to approve resolution eleven twenty seven dash zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For issuing county warrants and allowing the auditor to issue warrants without the prior approval of the board. For payment on freight, postage, express, payroll, water, lights, telephone, contractual services, witness fees, school of instruction registration fees and mileage.
Move to approve.
I would second that.
Motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve resolution eleven twenty seven dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For issuing county warrants and allowing auditor to issue warrants without prior approval of the board for payment on freight, postage, express. Payrolls, water, lights, telephone, contractual services, witness fees, school of instruction, registration fees, mileage, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve resolution number eleven twenty eight dash zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For inter-fund operating transfers authorized in the auditor to periodically transfer sums from the general fund. And the general rural service basic funds to the secondary roads fund during the twenty five, twenty six budget year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve resolution twenty eleven twenty eight dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For inter-fund operating transfers authorizing the auditor to periodically transfer sums from the general basic. And rural services basic funds to secondary road fund during the twenty five, twenty six budget year. And this is just us doing our. Our pledged operating transfers that we commit out of our.
Yep, we have a budget, we just need the authorization to, yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve rolls, resolution eleven twenty nine zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For township officials reimbursement with a compensation rate of twenty five dollars per meeting. And for clerk's bookwork of twenty five dollars per month, not to exceed three hundred dollars per year.
Move to approve.
Second thought.
Motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve resolution eleven twenty nine dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For township officials reimbursement with the compensation rate of twenty five dollars per meeting. And for clerk's bookwork of twenty five dollars per month, not to exceed three hundred per year. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve resolution number eleven thirty dash zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For payroll for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Move to approve motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve resolution eleven thirty dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. For payroll for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and authorized publication in the official newspapers, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve resolution eleven thirty one dash zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. Setting the compensation of all election board members and their temporary. And other temporary election officials and the hours and mileage rates.
Go move. I'd second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve resolution eleven thirty one dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. Setting compensator ra- compensation rates for elected board members and all other temporary election officials an hour. And the hour and mileage rates. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
So last week I asked for a motion to approve um. Uh, resolution number eleven twenty two. And there were some checks that had come in and to make it just easier. Um, Shelley and I decided to create another resolution, so today. I'm asking for a motion to approve resolution eleven thirty two dash zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. To rescind resolution eleven twenty two dash zero six dash seventeen dash twenty twenty five. And certifying amended delinquent leisure lake sewer assessments to the county treasurer for property tax collection. Effective June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
I make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve resolution eleven thirty two dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. To rescind resolution eleven twenty two dash oh six dash seventeen dash twenty twenty five. And certify amended delinquent leisure lake sewer assessments to the county treasurer for property tax collection. Effective June twenty four, twenty twenty five, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
So periodically, once a year, we try and clean up our outstanding warrants that are in the office. So it's not a lot of money, um it's only three hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty eight cents this year. But we do need to do that by resolution. So today I need a res- I need a motion to approve resolution eleven thirty three dash zero six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. Canceling outstanding warrants in the Jackson County Auditor's Office. For a total amount of three hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty eight cents effective June twenty four, twenty twenty five.
So when you say cancel, these are payments that have you sent out that haven't been cashed?
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve resolution eleven thirty three dash oh six dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. Canceling outstanding warrants in the Jackson County Auditor's Office. In the total amount of three hundred and thirty six dollars and sixty eight cents effective June twenty four, twenty twenty five. Any other discussion?
So does this go along with what we passed it? A year ago or maybe a little longer than that already, that it, they have a year to get? Yes, so. And that's why. Where if you work, do work for the county and. And you get, send your invoice in and you'll get paid in a timely manner.
And that's why we encourage people to A C H. These are checks. If people would just allow us to send it to their bank account, we wouldn't have to do this, so we are. Totally in support of A C H payments.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
That is all that I have for the board today. You know what, Mike, here's the deal. If you want that, that's fine, but we will have to change our claims process. Because. They'll all have to be done by the time we leave here on Friday, all the claims will have to be done. Because Luann sends everything out at nine o'clock on Monday. It will allow, we'll have to, you know, you can't do any claims on Monday, then, everything will have to be done. And if something were to come up, as far as my agenda, it would have to be done by Friday.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm okay with that, it seems, some of that seems a little redundant. I know there's a lot of meetings and council meetings that wouldn't I do consent agenda for a lot.
Uh, well, every, you know, liquor license, cigarette. Tobacco licenses, a lot of this mundane stuff.
We're, we're gonna back our, our claims process up then, so we're gonna, you're gonna lose a couple of days of claims process.
If we don't necessarily have to include claims processes right away, we can do some of the minor stuff. Just to clean it up and stuff.
If you want me to post that in the agenda on. We'd have to have it done by Friday night. On Monday, so.
That's what other ones like E C I and, and council meetings do too, I mean, they, they posted in your section that this is consent part of your agenda.
You won't have the figures, because a lot of times we're not getting the figures.
Have to do the claims right away, we could just start the consent agenda for the, the tobacco licenses.
You have one cigarette license a year.
Um, the liquor licenses, the fireworks permits, the. You know, all that kind of stuff, it's just.
Whatever works easier for you, babe.
Just gonna say, but no offense, the time we took to run through that, we're spending more time talking on it.
I, I, you know, I, it's up to you. I'm not in favor of it, but that's, that's up to you. To me, this feels more open.
Luann, you're up.
Morning.
Good morning.
How are we doing?
Not too bad. Um, calendar this week. Uh, Wednesday, tomorrow, June twenty fifth, at nine A M is an iris meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Nin. Thursday, June twenty sixth, at nine A M is an R P A meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Don and Nin. At four P M, um is a behavioral health town hall meeting by Zoom for any of you. Saturday from ten A M until one P M is the community baby shower in Clinton. For any of you that wanna go to that. Monday, June thirtieth, um the treasurer's office will be closing at noon that day because it is the last day of the fiscal year. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July first, at nine A M. So today. Won't be here, that's correct. I had a couple of fireworks permits um this morning. I'm looking for approval of a fireworks permit for Matt Andreessen. Um, on two hundred and fourteenth Avenue for the Fourth of July.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve Matt Andreessen. Um, fireworks permit for fireworks to be shut off on July fourth, approximately nine P M, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Also looking for approval of a fireworks permit for the Leisure Lake Property Owners Association. Um, they shoot, um generally every year they shoot off the dam. Um, in Bernard, and they're hoping to do it this Saturday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve Leisure Lake Property Owners Association. Fireworks permit for June twenty eight, twenty twenty five at dusk. Brain data is June, July fifth, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
They did try to apply earlier, she and I talked in May. And she was going to mail it in, and she said she mailed it in the end of May, but I never got it. So I sh- she finally came in and handed it to me, so that we could get it on the agenda.
Um, what does the calendar look like for July eight, are you that far ahead yet?
Yes.
So I did have received, uh, I did talk to Josh Bolt, he came over on Friday and talked to me. Um, is there any way that we could set up a work session on Tuesday, July eight, after the board meeting?
True.
And. The other question is, is who do you want invited?
Right now, honestly, was not really understanding quite where this goes, who's just us and him. Uh, just best on the city, if he wants to invite Chief Zagni, he can, but.
If I could at least get it scheduled so I can let him know. Let's see what Luann says here. At least we can.
I would have been an update from Jack and Linay, that's all that's really on yet.
Them employees are not represented by a union, correct?
What's that?
Them employees are not represented by a union, correct?
Um, I know the sheriff's department's under a union. Or the, the city, the city police is, I wonder if they are.
I don't think so, because of one of the things that's. In the proposed agreement, I would think that that would go against a union policy, so my. My gut reaction is no. But I don't know.
That we're not leaving somebody out there that needs to be.
I can get that information, yeah, cause I just. I made that assumption based on that request.
E- either and or, I, I think it's Josh's responsibility, there are now city employees now, so it's his responsibility to let, if they have a. Uh, a director or a leader, whatever you want to give the title to, whoever in that department. Ed, department head.
They do have retirement at the end of this year, so.
Yeah, so I see they're actively advertising for a position.
They should probably know.
Um, yeah, actually, cause we're, the next up on our agenda is a ten o'clock public hearing.
So we're okay with the work session on the twenty fourth?
Any way times, just like ten thirty or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Or whenever the meeting's over.
Depends on what we have on it.
We will have that abbreviated claims period or whatever that, you know.
About sitting here for a half hour waiting for.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean. So I guess. What I will tell him is plan on July eighth.
I would say he'll be here by about ten o'clock, cause there isn't a whole lot.
So, but as a work session, we can always back that up to the point.
So I'll just tell him July eighth and then time to be determined, right?
Thanks.
Good morning.
Hey guys, how's it going?
Fine.
You are.
I'm Tyler Cypher.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're here for the seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
You wanna do your extension?
Yeah, I do. What I thought was gonna be a. Slam dunk, just roll through it, cause we already had good information, we thought, well. It's taken more time than we thought, and then two, the priority has been the, the regular ordinance. And there's been times, and I see we have Brian, one of the zoning commissioners on, and he can tell you. By the time that they get done going through the. The packet for the zoning ordinance rewrite, they're spent. And there's been times, like even our last meeting, we didn't complete. The hundred and twenty page packet that we have to go through for the zoning ordinance, let alone get to the. Data mining, so we'd like to see. And I don't know how you guys wanna move forward with it, I don't know if you just wanna do an extension of um. Eleven oh five, three twenty five. And move it to December thirty first. Or whatever date you would choose, or if you want a new um. Resolution of moratorium.
I think we can just extend it, can't we, just, I mean.
And you're, what, what would you, auditory wise, you want a new resolution?
No, no, it's, it's really fact, we had this discussion yesterday. Yeah, we did. We, we thoroughly, and we're okay, because we've done it before, it's, you know. And so the way that I have it is, is just to ex- to extend a moratorium of resolution eleven oh five dash zero three dash twenty five dash twenty twenty five. On data mining facilities until whatever date you tell us, but. I think we're okay with, with a motion.
Okay, so in your best.
Eleven oh five dash oh three.
Zero three dash twenty five, dash twenty twenty five, yep.
Advice would be to six months or a year, what's, what's your advice right? Here's the point, I mean, the thing is, we have the moratorium on. Um, until we get this thing ironed out, uh, we haven't had any action or.
Let's do a year, just because.
We can always end it, correct?
Thirty of twenty twenty six.
Okay. It, it, it truthfully, I was a little, I mean, I wanted to give you guys a date, but. You know, I'm questioning the, the realisticness of.
I don't wanna be sitting here redoing the thing in the.
I know.
Six months either.
Well, we haven't even gotten to the wind, or send it to the solar data, or excuse me, the. Solar uh battery storage yet either. And it's not because that commission's dragging their feet, that is not the case, there's just so much.
It's a lot going on right now.
Coming up with that too, so a lot of this has changed on the. Upper echelon, if you will, that's gonna change maybe some of ours.
You're talking for the uh solar? So the utility, the utility scale, I can see that.
I mean. The funding has probably changed on a lot of that, so.
Okay, well, and that won't affect us, you know, on our ordinance.
Could advocate, no, but yeah.
But, you know, cause we still have to have a solid ordinance whether. There's money available or not for these type of things, and the state's still pushing for. For this, so. Uh, in, one of the things I caution when, when going forward, cause I won't be part of this anymore, is um.
I'll assume you're gonna read it.
Yeah, probably. I'll be at a public hearing going, what are you thinking? Uh, but no, um. We, we saw, we see what's happening at the state level with. Um, with, while they're trying to do it with both commercial utility scale wind and solar, but it's. You know, I go back to. You play silly games, you get silly prizes. Well, some of the games that some of these counties are playing with their wind ordinance. You know, because I don't wanna look at them type stuff, well, look where that's gotten us. And, you know, I like to think that our ordinance is, is not there, for the fact we have solid things that. You know, are, are scenic byways, national and state. And um the fact of the environmental differences, um. The topographical issues in our county with, with uh sinkholes. And, you know, the potential for water problems, but other counties don't have that, they. And I, you know, I look at some of those ordinances and go, and you're the reason. This, the state is looking at doing what, at what they're looking to do. So. But I just caution us with our solar ordinance too going forward, you know, do the right things for the right reasons.
Did we vote on the motion on the second?
There was a whole fiery discussion. So right now, we'd be looking, I think you tried to motion.
Yes.
Do you wanna second?
Sure.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to extend resolution eleven oh five dash oh three dash twenty five dash twenty twenty five. To have the moratorium for the data mining extended through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Motion carries.
Sounds good to me.
There you go.
So I'm gonna ask a question about the zoning, uh, the new zoning ordinance. So, once you sent this, and I agree, the hundred and twenty pages, there's a lot, there's a lot of reputation in that, is it? Is it wrote? And then I see all the notes on the side and I'm thinking, well, I don't like this word in there, but I. Is there a final that we can, do I have to read this thing four times?
Right, so uh, there's things on the ECIA website. And uh, I think I have to look, double check to see if we're just doing the clean version to make sure we're not doing the red line. The red line, anything you see with red lines on it is, is.
Taken out.
The changes, yeah, that won't be part of.
Actually liked that version of it. I liked the part that's brought out. It's addressed later on in the section somewhere, you know, if you make notes and get through it, yeah.
There's, uh, there's still some moving parts of. You know, we're, we're talking about what do we wanna regulate? Uh, one of the discussions today, or yesterday rather, was uh. Swimming pool, swimming pools. You know, rural people, you know, let's say I'm having company this weekend, I'm gonna go to Walmart and. We want the kids to play in the pool. I'm gonna buy a, a little pool, set it up in my backyard. You know, when do we require permit for that? Uh, and then the, the thing comes up with safety. Do we wanna put fencing? I know, and that's one of those things. What do we wanna regulate? So I've reached out to, uh, I think about eight of my peers. Of counties to, to address that part, to see what these other small counties are doing. You know, so there's things like that, um, the A U Ds, the accessory A D Us, accessory dwelling units. Is new in our ordinance, but it's also at the state level. That was a, um, I think it was in three three five point three five. Oh, I can't nab it or not.
Define an accessory dwelling unit.
So if you want your mama to move into your backyard. And you wanna build her a house that is. Accessory use, so it's not as big as yours, it's, it's. Under a certain square footage, it'd be like your granny pads or what are, you know, what people are calling, mother-in-law speed, yeah.
Cause you're talking about pool.
Yeah, that would work too. Uh, so that's what the accessory dwelling unit is, and it's defined at the state level. And so there's a lot of things in that new ordinance, if you look. Goes directly to Iowa code. And we also have it written to where if the Iowa code changes, we don't have to change the wording in our ordinance. Because it relates back to Iowa code.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and I don't, I, I think that's obviously a good idea. Um, there's just a few times I look in there and, and there's a few times when they say. You shall, like, I mean, you, you have to. Now, you gotta be careful with that word. Never, you gotta be careful with never and always and shall.
Yeah, it shall, uh, I.
And then one other, one other part that I seen is says. Um, it did give a set amount for days. It was, it was like. Um, called a timeframe of some kind, a, a, a. A reasonable timeframe. Okay, what is that? What's reasonable to you and what's reasonable to you? I think it has to have a date. And a lot of them did that, said twenty-one days, but there was a few spots, and maybe that's been changed since I read.
So that might relate back to a board of adjustment and zoning commission. We, there used to be a, us, a number in there, and I'm like, we can't make those numbers. That is not realistic. Um, and I think it goes back to some of that potentially, what you're talking about. Um, this board of adjustment, and reasonable to us is, if you don't make. Application by Thursday. For a zoning commission case, or a board of adjustment case that wants to be, you want held in July. You won't make it till August, because the deadline was missed. So reasonably, the next date is gonna be in August. If you apply next Monday. Or Tuesday, we, you're into August. So I think that's where, probably where the language that you're pulling from is the reasonable.
But reasonable to me and to.
Right, I may not consider that a reasonable.
It's, it's not. I mean, necessarily.
I know, so maybe in that it should have like a parentheses within deadlines.
I, I just think it's too vague to say a reasonable amount of time. It's different for me to you and everyone else is reasonable. My reasonable, well, the guy don't get up till ten o'clock, that's not reasonable to me, but it's reasonable to a lot of people.
Reasonable to him because he works nights or he works eleven to seven, you know.
I just think you have something solid in there to say, you know, and you, and, and if they do it by a certain date, well, they give them an extra thirty days, so be it that, you know.
Yeah, and, and.
Then it's unreasonable.
Yeah, because you look at it, it's like, you know, it's like, it's, it's July first, you know, your meeting is July. Whatever our meeting is in July, July twenty first or twenty eighth, why can't I make it? Well. We have printing deadlines to make with the newspaper for notice of public hearing. We have neighbor notices, we have packets to put together. There's a lot of moving parts.
So that makes that, I just wanna thank the boards again for their work on that. I mean, again, it's, it looks. Monotonous and, but it's, it's worth reading through and. Get the justice, but I appreciate their work on that.
And I'll, I'll pay attention, I'll, we'll look this up and see what we may need to do.
Some sections down, but the second draw grumble together and then.
If you have that and you wanna email, um, Laura and Becca, I'll be out tomorrow. However, Laura and Becca are still meeting. Tomorrow morning at, I believe, ten A M. If you wanna send that to Bill, she and I.
Wish I could find my notes back, cause sometimes I sit here and read it, sometimes I send it.
I get that. I get that. So, okay. But uh, but thank you guys. I know it's a lot of reading, but.
No, but it has to be done.
Yeah.
Yep, well, we got about three minutes, so. Any border commission results or uh, border commission reports you wanna?
I did sit down on the senior board meeting. They have a lot of activities going on down there and. They're always looking for new volunteers and. And new items to be happening down there, so if people have anything. Anything that way to bring forward, that they greatly appreciate kind of some new ideas coming in. Trying to find where I had there. Oh, in the month of May, they had three hundred and thirty-four attendees. It within their building.
Does that count the Lula?
I would say the Lula has been there.
So, um, I'm not for sure if that was included in that. That count, but, but yeah, I think they said seventy-eight people. For that meal. Um, they just held an ice cream social last Friday, so. I'm not for sure how that went over. I wasn't able to attend that, but. You know, they're. Moving forward and trying to get their website up to date and. Things like that.
No, that's good activity, so.
They're, they're doing well. Limestone Bluff met last week. I was unable to be there, cause I was working at the rodeo. I did talk to Michelle and she says everything's going pretty good. She's worked with a lot of groups. Around trying to get uh, grants and stuff, you know, with the mustard and the coconut coming up and. Um, different things like that, everything staying busy. She's doing well.
Uh, Waste Authority met also, again, I mean, you know, the, uh, condition of our operation there now is shut down, but. Again, we did meet with private individual and just discussing uh, options maybe or. You know, what the board would like to, how the board would like to perceive, but either way, the village is gonna be rebuilt and we're gonna have. You know, a transfer station again, so. Moving forward, takes time. Somebody just asked me about that. Well, it's just a process, you know. Current companies, everybody has to approve and does it up, but now the building's gonna be. Rebuilt and either way, whether we, you know. Um, at, at the last time I heard, we were thinking four months, but again, it's again, uh, of supply.
Right.
So we can get the steel and, and whatnot and. Material that we need to do is, we're gonna save a lot of time because we're using the original design footprints. So it's gonna be exactly the same building.
Well, it's ten o'clock. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the proposed ordinance, three seventeen for the zip bar rezoning. Alright. We now are.
So I did not receive many calls or questions about it. I expected to get some, but I did not, and I expect you did maybe.
Not after the public hearings. I didn't have hear any background.
Surrounding land.
No, sir. No, and I'm.
So you just wanna explain it briefly?
Okay, so Tyler, and I'm gonna pronounce, and I met his grandma years ago, and she. I was like, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. And she's like, it's easy. It were my, it rhymes with diapers. So Cypress, diapers, Cypher, diaper, Cypher.
Is that right?
That's right.
Yes, his grandma taught me that.
I don't know that I explained it that way, but yeah.
My name's like diapers, grandma did, and I'm like. You see it sticks with me, you know, ten years down the road, so, um. It, it worked. She must have been an educator, but, um.
It worked for you.
It worked for me. Yeah, getting how my mind works, right? So anyway, Tyler owns property, um, if I remember right, about eleven acres or thirteen, excuse me. Seventeen point five acres of, of, in Tatermore Township, um. Above three hundred twentieth street. It's, it's zone X, and he only wanted to rezone the front part. So the first two hundred and thirty feet measured from the center line of the road. And it comes up to about two acres, and that's inner, it doesn't matter about the size of that, but um. The, the zoning commission did vote to recommend. That, that rezoning of the front two hundred and thirty feet of that property. And what that does is, it's gonna allow him to do um, an, an engine shop, or they build the engines. They don't drop them in the cars as a rule, they build the engines. Uh, they don't test them on the road. Um, and he, I'm, I'm gonna let him explain that better, cause he's gonna know his business better than I do. Uh, but we did have some concerns by neighbors, um. Some are concerned about their, uh. Nice and beautiful and peaceful, quiet area. Getting loud, um, they're worried about their livestock, um, they're worried about delivery trucks, uh. Some are worried about, is this gonna affect their property values going down the road, uh. Another concern again, the amount of deliveries, increased semi-traffic, and I'll let. Um, Tyler address his hobbies in semi-traffic when he, when he speaks, um. Concerns about heavy equipment being loaded. Again, Tyler's gonna probably address that issue. Is his, his toy is not his business, um, so, uh. Can we have Tyler? It's the hard road, three hundred twenty of that, three hundred twentieth street.
Road over twenty-two. Just about where Seavening Ridge comes out.
Yeah, just past, just uh, west. Yeah, on our side of the road. So I'm terrible at public speaking, just so you know, but anyhow, um.
Well, just introduce yourself.
My name's Tyler Cypher, um, so. Basically, um. Looking to get them from two acres-ish or whatever, you know, whatever makes the most sense, which we figured was the front two acres, reasonable commercial. Um, my dad. Oh, I don't know, twenty years ago, he was, uh, uh, he did, you know, machining of engines and stuff like that. And he's coming up on retirement here, um, he works at Dear Interview, he's coming up on retirement, and. So basically, we're trying to make a splash into building engines, which, um. We've got the skills, we've got the tools, we got all the stuff to do it. We just wanna have a legal spot to do that. Um, you know, so I've got that storage shed there. I thought, well, we could dedicate a section of that and. You know, we can build engines out of there and it'd be perfect, you know, and I don't know how much you guys are familiar with engine building or not, but. Um, it's a pretty quiet process. I mean, basically, you get the engine in, you assemble it, you clean it, I mean. Ninety percent of the time, you don't even have the door open because you don't want the humidity inside. You know what I mean? You gotta keep it dry and no rust and stuff like that, so, um, the kind of the process is, um. You know, we bring in an engine, then again, it would come in, you know, one of our pickup trucks, no different than any other vehicle, you know, one of our vehicles come in. Take it out, disassemble it, clean it, machine it, put it all back together, going, um, as far as. You know, like semi-traffic and stuff like that, um. I've got, as I explained to think in the zoning meeting, um. I'm just a big kid. My toys just got bigger with me, so I've got, you know, a couple excavators, dozers, stuff like that. And I've got other property in Jackson County and stuff too, and other counties that, you know, I fix up and whatever, and, um. So I like to play in the dirt, whatever, so that's kind of where the semi-traffic that. Guys, you're, you know, I think, I, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but maybe you remember just west, um.
Mister Kneef.
Yeah, Kneef, yeah, and he's, we talked probably for a half hour after the zoning meeting or whatever. He just really concerned with the semis unloading on the roads, he says. I, you know, there's plenty of room. I tell him to back in and stuff like that. I wanna keep it safe too, you know, and uh. And I know he's, you know, really worried about that and stuff, and I, I told him, he says, any, next time you see them, I says. Yell at them, don't let back in, there's plenty of room to back in and stuff like that, but that's nothing to do with. You know, anything like this, and as far as the noise and stuff goes, I mean, I have cattle myself, and, um. You know, so I, I'm not, I'm not trying to create any noise, there's not gonna be excess noise, I mean. Honestly, um, the day-to-day. Stuff around there would look exactly the same, other than probably pickups coming in and out a little more often, you know what I mean?
So the building is there right now, correct, right? Is that the building you tend to use?
Yeah, yeah.
Building now? I mean, I can remember seeing it, but.
It's sixty by eighty.
Correct.
And then, uh, yeah, I, I've, I have a twenty or eighteen or twenty foot. On the side of it like.
So, uh, was most of the concerned neighbors at the zoning meeting, is that correct?
There were several, well, I think the only one that was there was Mister Kneef and then the others. Attended by Zoom.
Lots of Zoom, yeah, yeah.
Well, I get, I, I, I have a little bit of difficulty listening to somebody say, well, they're concerned about semi-traffic and all that stuff when they're on a. Paper service, that's a main, that's a main drive thorough, thoroughfare, I mean, that's. Where they're gonna drive.
And one of the, one of the zoning board members, she says, well, what's different about that than a combine going down the road?
The agricultural community is what I was gonna say, and then.
Good job.
Right.
Yeah, it's like, I mean, that's, that's where most everybody's gonna drive more than they're going. You know, I take that way to go to St. Donatus to go counts, I mean.
Right.
That's just everybody drives.
It's Lamont Highway.
Yeah.
The, uh. I know, and like I said, I, 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 I think what happened, um, and the reason we had such a response at the zoning meeting. Um, was one of the neighbors, um. Ca- called and got all the other neighbors riled up and, and whatever, you know, I mean, you know how that stuff goes, so. I'm, I wanted to clear it all up in front of everybody at the zoning, this is what we're trying to do.
So you're basically rebuilding engines.
Correct.
So it's more wrenching, you're not gonna be necessarily banging, clanging on metals.
No.
Piping out of big machinery.
Not at all.
That's what it is, rage current, try them all, truly.
Yeah, right.
No, I know, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I mean, I know most of the neighbors that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, I know most of the property owners around there and I affected some discussion, but I didn't have any. I assume they accepted it as presented.
And I like to be a good neighbor, you know, who doesn't, you know?
That's the way it should be.
Makes sense to me.
And will there be like signage on that then?
I don't plan on putting any signage up, I really don't. I mean, because, you know, like I said, most of the time. We're gonna bring the engines in ourselves and then.
Well, your clientele is kind of, sort of miles and here, there, that, that's not like a.
Correct.
A manufacturing plant.
Yeah, it's not like we're Walmart or we're, you know, a, you know, cupcake shop or whatever, you know what I mean, we're, all of our stuff is pretty much, and. I'll be honest with you, most of our work goes a long ways away. I mean. To get a customer in Jackson, Dubuque, or even Jones County is very rare for us. So we're bringing money in from. All over. I mean, we have customers in Florida, I mean, we have customers in Dubai, Canada. You know, and so we, we do bring quite a bit of money in the community, and like I say, I wanna do this right. I wanna do this, you know. Hundred percent, you know, so, um, that's why we're here, you know.
Any other comments for the public hearing? Any other comments for the public hearing?
I would make the motion for those public hearing.
I'd second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to close the public hearing for the Cypher, um, rezoning. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Pretty good, yeah.
I ain't an old dog yet. All right, so next up is discussion of possible, well, first we gotta this nature, are we gonna take action on the ordinance three seventeen? Before we decide to wave.
We had to do beforehand.
Cause again, there's some confusion. We had a public hearing. There has to be three readings of an ordinance, not three public hearings. So we had our public hearing, and now we pass the reading of an ordinance. And then at that point, we can decide whether we wanna pass, you know, suspend Robert's rules of orders and proceed with the second and third reading.
So the way I see it, you still have to approve the rezoning, correct? The order three seventeen resort.
Right.
That would be a next line of business.
Yep.
I would make the motion to go ahead and approve our dozen three seventeen and the Cypher rezoning.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve ordinance three seventeen for the Cypher rezoning on Three Twentieth Avenue. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you wanna suspend the rules and do the second and third reading? If so, you need to state, I'd like to suspend Robert's rules of orders and proceed with the second and third reading of the ordinance.
I would like to suspend Robert's rules of orders and proceed with the second and third readings due to the lack of input.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to suspend Robert's rules of orders and proceed with the second and third readings of ordinance number three seventeenth for the Cypher rezoning. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Now, can we do the second, third reading?
Now, we need to do a second reading in one motion, and then a third reading in a separate motion.
So the, uh, we are waiving the second reading, is that what I'm doing?
We already waived it. Now we need a motion to approve the second reading of the uh ordinance three seventeen.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve the second reading of ordinance three seventeen. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I would make a motion to do the third reading of ordinance three seventeen.
I would second.
We got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve the third and final reading of ordinance three seventeens for the Cypher rezoning on Three Twentieth Avenue. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we will do the necessary posting of the ordinance and all that kinda stuff, and you're good to go.
Good to go?
Yep.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Nice day.
Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
I was told to keep it short and sweet. That was, that was the red. I, I was up there.
Thank you.
Yes, good job.
Any other boards?
I agree.
I follow directions.
Any other uh boards or commission reports you need to talk about?
Charlie, are you here for a purpose?
I guess, but.
Okay. If there's no other business before the board, I make a motion adjourned.
I'd second that.
Motion by Mike, second by Nan to adjourn the meeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Have a good day, everybody.